Yep.
All right. Call to order, the January 11th, 2021 Macedonia Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Shavone?
There.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Velada?
I'm here.
Mr.?
Do we lose her something? We lost you there for a second, but I think you said Mr. Roberts, and that's where it came.
Mr. Roberts is here.
Yes.
All right. Approval of the January 11th, 2021 meeting minutes. Susan, the only thing I would comment is if you could make a note, let me double check. Do we have that in here? Did I abstain?
Oh, yeah.
Or was that the, was that the meeting minutes before?
I thought that was the.
That was, that was the meeting before. Okay, so anybody have any comments or notes on that?
No.
I'd move to approve them. The minutes has.
Mr. Cox, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roberts. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. All right. The first item is the Raising Canes. And for this one, I'm going to have to abstain, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shavoni. And I will probably drop out here at some point. But take it away, Joe.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. I did read Mr. Francis' analysis. And I think, just to make sure everybody understands it, I think I'd like him to go over that again. And I think that there's a couple of issues that I think we have to discuss. But before we do that, I'd like to have Mr. France go through his, his report. Brian, can you take over, please?
You're muted.
No problem, and I apologize. I was, it's the third time tonight I was muted and kept talking. Somebody's telling me something. So my report is, you just received today and apologize with the, the meeting, the way it lands in the beginning of the month. And I got the packet just, you know, kind of at the start of this week. So apologize, you just got the memo today normally that's a, I try to get those a week to you in advance. So the, the date is dated February 6th, and it's for final site plan review for the existing building renovation for Canes. Renovation of the, the existing Steak and Shake building. So again, the, the renovation does, see, 20,000 square feet for the minimum lot size, three parcels on 1.2 acres. Renovating the building completely for Canes. I reviewed a, an application which was date stamped January 15th, 2021, which included a final site plan package along with some architectural elevations. And I have a few comments that remain. So that with regard to the off-street parking, and this is a known issue, previously the plan showed 34, there's now 36 spaces. But 72 are required by code. So at some point, at some point, the Steak and Shake had 53 spaces that I'm assuming maybe was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals at one point in history. Nevertheless, the applicant, as my understanding, is on the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think February 17th, for a request related to the total off-street parking spaces. And then on the revised plan, a discussion point last time, the plan showed a 19-foot aisle adjacent the drive-through. And that really isn't an aisle to funnel traffic, in particular, most likely the dumpster, garbage dumpster refuse removal truck through that aisle adjacent to drive-through. So the applicant, based on a discussion, did reduce it down to 15 feet. Now, I, I wasn't aware of this, but the, they are going for a variance to permit that 15 feet. I think it's the city's position that they'll need that. I did not note that in my previous report because the way I read the code, that access aisle that's to be 19 feet wide is to service a parking lot. And so, but that's fine, the, the zoning administrator's interpretation is they need a variance, so they are going for that as well. I felt that 15 feet could still even be reduced down. Last time in my report, I said that effectively you can put the delivery route and turning templates to show that you need wider than, something less than 15 feet, 12 or 14 feet. If you need more than that, then you can show that on the, on the plans. And I still believe that if 15 is the minimum that they need, that could be shown on the plans to demonstrate that. With regard to the architecture, the city's design consultants, my understanding, has been working with the administration and the applicant to achieve that desired architecture. I noted this last time, the mutton bars have been completely eliminated from the windows that are on there now and replaced with a more modern style window. If that's acceptable, and maybe I missed it last time, the commission should just acknowledge that. And if I, if I did miss that, I apologize. And then a big change from the last time we saw the architecture, a substantial portion of the building is now clad with face brick as opposed to split-faced block and hardy plank siding. There is some hardy plank siding, but it's been substantially eliminated. And I would say it's probably more of a 10% of the building has hardy plank, whereas the other 90% is now all brick to match what was previously there, which is a big improvement. And then I just kind of went through the elevations, the main elevation or the south elevation that fronts 82 has a, it has a number one sort of embossed, if you will, or outlined into the, into the building. I just, I didn't, I don't feel that that fits into the town center architecture and should be an item of discussion. And then that's on the south elevation. On the north elevation, the building, the dormers, the existing dormers are maintained. And again, the block was converted to brick. And then on the east elevation, it appears that those two windows that we talked about last time that were close to the main entrance, those were shown as faux windows previously. It looks like they've been changed to vision glass, but the applicant, I think, can confirm that. And then on that same elevation, there was a sign previously included on the, on that east elevation. Looks like maybe somebody took a black sort of marker and marked it out. I think that means they're removing that sign from the elevation. At the end of the day, we're not reviewing and approving the sign package, but I do just have some comments. And then on the west elevation, again, most of the hardy plank has been converted to brick. And then there was a sign in the drive-through gable on the west elevation, and that's been removed. And the cane sign that says Raising Canes, Chicken Fingers, One Love Macedonia Remains between the two drive-through windows. I felt it's more in line with the architectural character desires for the town center that the sign that was previously in the, in the gable above the drive-through window, that that sign should remain and the, the red sign shown on the west elevation be eliminated. But that's, again, more of a signage discussion for a later time. And then a couple of last items, the, the, the plan does provide revised landscaping in, in general. I think the landscaping is fine. A couple of things have occurred. Some landscaping around the corral area was eliminated. It looks like it was eliminated because the walkway was reconfigured. But some additional landscaping was created throughout the site. I'm not concerned about the, you know, the loss of some, there's a lot that's been created. But two issues come to mind as I reviewed it. One, the newly created landscape bed along that western edge that, that we talked about with that, that access aisle out to the, the Route 82. That landscape bed, I would like to see a, a sec, or third tree, and it's a Brandywine Red Maple, be added to the south side, south end of that landscape island to kind of balance it out, so there'd be three versus two. And then I felt that the use of just one species, in this case, the Gold Flame Spirea, that it would be helpful to probably mix that up and do a second or even a third species within there as opposed to just Spirea. I don't think you need to add any more material, just different type of material and balance it out with a couple of species as opposed to one. And that was it on that side. And then going to the other side, there is some, again, some of these Brandywine Red Maples introduced into the other landscape island that separates the use to the east. And I just felt that maybe we could try to match that landscape island to the western one. The more, you know, landscaping is a relatively cheap feature that greens up the site and really just, really just makes for a better site. It's, it's a pretty cost-effective way to do that, to sort of take your eye off the amount of pavement and such that's on the property. So I thought trying to match up that eastern landscape bed would be good. And then finally, the last, the last item that was raised at the last meeting that we needed a photometrics plan and is provided for this review. The site photometrics are concerning at the property lines, particularly on the, the north side of the property where you're exceeding one foot candle at that residential property line. And I recognize there's some screening wall there, there's vegetation, but historically, the planning commission has used half a foot candle at non-residential, or I'm sorry, at residential property lines and a foot candle at non-residential lines. If you stick to that sort of historic standard you've employed for other, other businesses, the lighting plan really will need to be revised. I think it's relatively simple fixes, but it will need to be revised. So I recommended, well, one, the plans, and I think this is just sort of a simple fix, but plans as printed out aren't, don't scale out at the scale provided, which makes it a little hard to review exact widths, but that could be easily overcome. So I felt that if the condition was founded, if the commission finds acceptable, you could approve this conditionally subject to a final administrative review of a new set of revised set of plans that reflect compliance with the notes in this report. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. France. Appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions at this point?
I have one question. On the, the topic about the BGA with the 15-foot, do we have to, does anything have to be done? Or has that already been approved by the BGA?
It's my understanding, Mr. Velada, that's going to the Board of Zoning Appeals on February 17th. So any action you take tonight, if you were inclined to approve this conditionally, you would have to make your approval subject to the Board of Zoning Appeals positively approving the requested variances for the drive aisle and the number of parking spaces. If that doesn't happen, though, the applicant would have to come back to the planning commission to, you know, to rework the site or however. But that's, that's what would have to happen.
Thank you, Brian.
No problem.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question. In relation to the sign recommendation, I know we're not approving signs, but if that sign on the west elevation gets removed and they go back to the sign in the gable, is that acceptable then to have that large brick area then there without any type of decoration or anything? Or?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. That's a great question. And, and, you know, I think that we'd have to work with the applicant. I don't know if there's a way to add a window there, but it does leave a fairly blank space. That's a great point you bring up. There could be some, there could be some brick work there that adds some type of brick feature on the building that's not too costly. That could be done as well.
That could be done, we're still with a conditional approval though, right?
Yeah, I, I think so, because Pam, I think, it's my understanding, I think she still has to give the final sign-off of the plans. So I think that could be done.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Gatlin, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to go through a couple of these comments just to, you know, kind of address what, or make some clarifications. It was mentioned that we're adding hardy plank to where there is existing brick. And what we're actually doing is removing the existing ephesus or stucco that is underneath the canopies that, that are there today, the black and white striped canopies. As those come down, what is behind that is ephesus, and that can be seen significantly on the current east facade at the existing location. And so what we, in working with Ms. Schultz, we had, we had changed that material to remove the ephesus and provide the hardy plank siding. So I just wanted to clarify why there is hardy plank siding as opposed to, we're not removing brick to add hardy plank siding. We're removing ephesus to, and then replacing it with that.
And that, and that is, and I just want to jump in real quick, and I apologize, you are correct, Drew, and I appreciate you pointing that out. And that, and that hardy plank siding is a big improvement to the ephesus.
Yeah, and, and we agree with that 100%. I just wanted to make that clarification that it wasn't, that didn't, there was no, no one who was concerned with us removing brick that was there. We did also, just as a, this is an aside, but we did find a brick that is very compatible. It's, it's very, it matches extremely closely, so we're really excited about that. What we will be doing is any of the, where we have, all of our towers are going to be the new brick. And then we're going to be recycling the brick from the existing dumpster enclosure to infill where we're infilling on any of the, on any of the locations. So just as an FYI on that, so that it keeps that, where we're not going to see like a very significantly different colored brick trying to infill something. And it's all going to match as closely as possible, but it'll all be, you know, consistent with where it's at. As far as the one-way access aisle, I, I know we had talked about reducing that from 19 to, and I proposed 15. One of the concerns that I have is not necessarily where our, where our delivery trucks are coming through. But what I do have concern with is that that is the access that the adjacent parcels are using to access the light there. And if we make it too tight, I know we're just going to continue to be replacing that curb, or it's going to get dinged up, whether it be by tires or wheels that, that chip it away. And so I would like to keep that, you know, 15 feet if possible. That would be our preference on that. We are in for the, for the reduction in, in parking. And we do have document, we do have it within our application to the BGA, the justification of why we, why we feel that the 36 spaces are accessible or acceptable or sufficient for our space. I did increase that as it was noted in the report from 34 previously to maximize what we feel we've maximized the amount of parking that we can really fit on this site while improving the drive-through component to, to handle the, the more drive-through heavy that we are compared to what Steak and Shake's business is. We did work with Pam on the, on that, on the tower, on that front tower. And really, I feel our previous tower that we had, that we, we had presented at the December meeting, this is a significant improvement, in my opinion, to that, to provide, you know, we think it scales a lot better. And it works with the existing components of the windows, all the existing windows, if it's within that. And we just feel that it is a lot, a significant improvement over what was presented previously. And in relation to the one, I know it was discussed early, or early in the meeting, and I know this was the time to really, you know, talk about it. That one feature is something that is, it's a, it's an architectural feature. It's, it's in fact a, it's a reclaimed car hood that are pieced together. So it, and it has some three-dimensional component and, and it is a three-dimensional component. So we think that it is a nice architectural feature. It does have branding significance to us, much the same as like the Taco Bell terracotta roof. We do have significant branding and what that, why that is, is because our slogan is One Love. And so that's why there's a one. But it doesn't, you know, it, other than the shape, it's not a word that says One Love. And that sign has been removed since that patio was removed previously. The signage, we had kept the, the, the red sign that you see, which is the, it's typically a hand-painted mural on actual brick. We understand that that is not something that the, that the city allows. And so we had that as a painted mural on a substrate is what that was going to be. There is cultural significance from why we do that, why we have the mural. The very first Raising Canes location in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, when they were going through the construction, they uncovered an old Wolf's Bakery mural that looked, that, that had the same lettering. And that's where the entire logo came from. But the other big piece of that, so it pays homage back to the original location. But the other big piece is it says the community's name on the outside. So in, internal to our business, we are very, very tied to the community. We do a lot of fundraising through spirit nights and, you know, general givings to, you know, nonprofits. And we focus on a lot of pet welfare, a lot with education, with schools, and also junior achievement with entrepreneurship. And so the X, the, the sign on the outside is a external tie back to the community. On the inside, there are graphics that are local graphics inside with local sports teams and just local memorabilia. But that's all internal, where this is an external, that this is truly the Macedonia. So when this restaurant gives back, it gives back to Macedonia community. It's not giving back to, you know, Columbus, Ohio, it's giving back to the Macedonia community. So that's why we have, why we would prefer to have that sign. And then the item, I'm, we're amenable to the landscaping plan improvements or suggestions that Mr. France mentioned. And the site lighting, one clarification I would like to make on that. I will say that the, the, the side property lines do exceed the one foot candle. And I apologize because the scaling of the numbers is not ideal. But the, the actual foot candles along the north property line are 0.1 and 0.2, and then 0.3 and 0.4 are the maximum up there. I understand that because all the numbers are on top of each other, it looks like it says 3.0 or 2.0 or 4.0, but it's actually 0.4 foot candles. So it does fall within that half a foot candle requirement. I will say that the side adjacent to the, to the commercial properties do not have that. But what we do in order to come into compliance with that is we put a shroud on the actual, on the actual light fixture once it, once it is installed to ensure that we're in compliance with the foot candle requirement.
All right, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Gatlin.
Yeah.
Going back to the sign, okay, the sheet 84.10.
Yes.
The east elevation.
Yes.
And the, oh, I don't know what the, what you want to call it. Where you have a projection coming out. It's blackened out, there's an area that's blackened out on that. What was supposed to go there, or what's going on there?
Well, and, and that, I apologize, the, and I'll share my screen to show, and I don't, we had our engineer submit these because they are local. But mine shows, are you saying that this is blackened out in, in?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I don't know why that was blackened out necessarily. We were proposing, in speaking with our corporate entity, they were proposing to have the, to, to have that Raising Cane sign over top of that because that is our side entrance. So, so they did want to highlight the, the fact that there is the entrance there along the side.
Okay, that clarifies that, good.
Yeah, so I apologize for the, for what was delivered, that, I wish that hadn't happened.
No problem. One other thing, Mr. France was discussing on your lighting plan. On the western side, you have some places that have two lumens per square cubic, per square foot, whatever, along that side. And I think, let's see, 2.6, looks like 2.6. Okay, now you're going to revise that, or you, you're going to do something else with that you mentioned?
Yeah, we, we can, we can revise it. Essentially, what happens is it's, it's hard to model within the software that, that we have in order to get that to be a, essentially, we have to build a tiny little wall that's right behind the, the, the light fixture. But that's what, so in the field, we would install a shroud. So it would be a, a black piece of metal that comes down to shield from going backwards. They just don't have that as a typical light fixture type or something that I can easily add to this model. And so, but we can revise that to, to, to show that, and then we can, then we would provide that shroud.
Okay.
When it is installed.
My, my suggestion would be, when, once you revise that with the numbers, and if they're not, how can I say? If they don't reflect what is approved, you, you would want to note on there that you're providing the, the planned illumination with some type of the shrod-ing device, so no one misunderstands what's going on in that area.
Understood, okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is, let's see. We, we still, we still, my chair keeps slipping. We still have to go for sign approval on this project. We still have basically three approvals left to go on this. Okay, one from the BGA for the parking, one from the BGA on the drive, 15-foot drive, driveway. And what was the other one? There was another one. Who was another one? Well, the revised lighting plan. So my question is basically, the type of approval we can offer tonight, if we can offer any, will be kind of limited. I think we don't want to put the cart before the horse here with these, especially with the two BZA approvals. I think Mr., in Mr. Franz's letter, and I will ask him to read the lower part of that again, I think he brings up a good point as far as some directions for us. Mr. Franz, could you reread that again, please?
Which piece in particular?
Your recommendation.
So I, I, so I recommended that the commission can consider final plan approval, subject to the items noted in my report, and felt that if, if you were okay with it, that could be a final administrative review internally for the applicant to avoid coming back to a meeting, understanding that any approval has to be subject to the BZA approval, and if that doesn't happen, they'd have to come back to the commission. That's not something that, if BZA doesn't make the determination, they'd have to definitely come back to the commission.
Okay. I, I thought I read in, in your report that something about a conditional approval.
Yes, I, I feel as though you could approve this final approval conditioned upon the items noted in my report. I think that, you know, the commission does need to take some action on this issue about the number one. And if that's acceptable, it's just something I felt wasn't part and parcel with the town center design standards, that sort of that Western Reserve look, but the commission can certainly approve it with that, that number one. I just think the applicant needs direction if that's, if that's acceptable. And then the mutton bars, if those are, if it's acceptable not to have those, that's fine. I just, I may have missed it at the last meeting, I didn't think we gave definitive direction, so I just felt that would be good to give that definitive direction. Sounds like the landscape items, the applicant's fine with making some of those changes. The applicant is proposing to stick with the 15 foot drive aisle. I did go in and look quickly on that issue. It looks like the drive aisle that was on the Steak It Shake with their angled parking, that that was around 13 to 14 feet. And, and I can respect with what the applicant's stating, so, you know, 15, it's a foot or two is not the end of the world. If the commission was fine with the 15, so be it, leave it at the 15. And then the site photometrics would just have to be cleaned up. I appreciate the explanation on the north, north side, it definitely all scrunch together. I would just ask, and, and I think the, I think the applicant sees this, and I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, make too much of a big issue about it, but when the resubmital does occur, if you could just ensure that these issues are buttoned up, if you will, so the photometrics plan is clean and readable, the plans are to a scale. If you're intending on having a sign in a particular area that either show all the signage or remove it all together. Now, I will note that that additional sign, that that's fine on that elevation, if you were looking to do two on the other elevation with the red canes, which I assume is a, is a painted sign as opposed to any sort of fabricated sign, I think that's painted from what I could tell from your other buildings. So just if you could clean the plans up, that'd be great.
Could this not be done and submitted at the time that they submit for sign approval?
Yes, absolutely. The signage, I, I'm, I'm saying, I think the commission acknowledges tonight, you're not giving signage approval. So, so that's fine, they could, they could leave them on. I just want the record to reflect that the commission is not approving signage tonight. That's still a different review.
Right, good, okay. Anybody else have any comments?
I do. So I'm a little confused with, with the number one. I've, I've been looking on the internet, I've seen how they've used it in other buildings and other locations, but is the number one an architectural feature or is it a sign? Or can it be both? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
If you're asking me, it really comes down to the municipality on what the sign code reads. We consider it an architectural feature, but obviously that is beneficial to us, so I don't, we would be, I, I don't want to say that we're completely objective to, to what we view it as, but i- if we're reading the code, typically, it would be, we would be considering it a architectural feature, again, much like, much like a, the Taco Bell uses a terracotta roof instead of shingles. Pizza Hut right next door uses a bright red roof. I understand that Pizza Hut is, that was a long time ago, but I'm just pointing those out as examples of items that are architectural features.
Mr. Roberts, if I can, I just pulled up your most up-to-date sign code, and I can read you the definition of a sign, which you raise a, a good point. I actually, I think it's considered a sign under our, under our code. It says, "Sign means, means any structure or any device attached to a structure, or painted or represented directly or indirectly thereon intended to announce, direct, or advertise. A sign may include banners, lights, or other site or building features, and may be represented by words, or letters, figures, symbols, or characterizations, or other insignias or devices. Architectural features, either as a part of the building or freestanding, are not considered signs and are thus exempt from these regulations." So, and it goes on to say, "An architectural feature is a, is, is any construction attending, but not an integral part of the sign, which consists of landscape, landscape or building or structural forms contemplating the site in general." So I feel like it's probably a sign because it's a, represented by words or letters, features, symbols, or characterizations. But that's really an interpretation by the zoning administrator for the city when the sign application comes.
Okay, so really quick question, Mr. Gatle, is that, number one, is that like, three dimensional? Like, I'm looking at some pictures I found in all, all the locations that you guys have built where it's indented in, and then it looks like it has some type of reddish material similar to what you described, like reclaimed, I think you said they were car hoods or automobile hoods. Is, is that your intention with this, or is it going to pop out? Is it going to go in? Is it flush with the, with the brick that's there?
We, so we can do it multiple different ways. It can be indented, it can be, it can be flush with the brick. We typically don't like it exactly flush, just to give it that different material or that different view. Or it can be, you know, three dimensionally where it, it comes off of the, off of the brick. What we have, what we put together just quickly with this elevation was something that was applied after the brick. But it can be done in a multitude of different ways.
Yeah, so Mr. Franz, is that change it anymore in your opinion? You know, if it's indented or pops out or anything like that? I'm just, I mean, in my opinion, I think it looks sharp, but obviously, we have a code, we need to follow code, so just try to figure that part out.
Yeah, I would say, since it's after the fact, that makes it feel less of an architectural feature and more of an after-the-fact symbol, whatever added to the building. If it were, you know, built an integral to the building, maybe it's less of a feel of a sign. I'd have to, I guess, take a look at the details a little more. If the commission's okay with it, I guess, given some direction on exactly how to do it would be, would be fine. I, I'm curious, have they done it on every single Cane's restaurant? Are there any, like, the Glen Allen in Illinois, it didn't look like it was on that one? Whatever store 432 is, it doesn't look like it's on that one as well? Is it on everyone?
No, it is not. And, and we have run into before with, with different municipalities that it, they would consider it as a sign, and, and so there have been times that it has not been allowed. For example, Strongsville, it was not permitted. So that's just a local example of where we did not have it because it was not permitted. I want to say the rest of our Northeast Ohio locations have it, Central Ohio and, and Cincinnati and Dayton area as well, but I do know Strongsville did not.
Do you know, coincidentally, if the proprietor of this particular franchise is the same as the Strongsville?
It is, yes. So we, we're, I'm representing Raising Cane's Ohio, and so we have all the, all the Ohio and Cincinnati metropolitan area, so there's a couple in Kentucky.
Can I, can I ask a question? Maybe Mr. Franz, can't we defer, since, since you consider it a sign, and it might be a sign, but of course, this is sort of a marketing thing for them, can't we consider this one when this comes back to us, I guess, for all the signs on here? Why are we, why are we hashing over this now? I guess that's the question. Why do we have to give direction right now, whether we want it on there or don't want it on there?
You, you don't necessarily, if you, if you believe it's a sign, that is going to be an issue with the sign code. So if you think it's a sign and this isn't the appropriate time because we're not dealing with signs, then that answers the question, but, you know, again, it, it's, it's a design feature and the, the architectural requirements, if you feel that it's fine within the confines of the architectural requirements, then you can allow it. I, I just, I felt, you know, that it doesn't, that it doesn't really fall within the Western Reserve architecture, but you could also punt that question to the city designer.
Yeah, and Mr. Cox, the other reason I was bringing it up, now, now that Mr. Gatle's explained it's something that's applied after the fact, I, I know they're doing some work there, it looks like some internal demolition and all that, so I was just wondering if we had to make some decision tonight or some guidance tonight, if it's going to slow down things or stop things or cause problems, but if it's something that's applied after, then, you know, maybe that could be, or probably would be determined, you know, when we, when they submit the sign application.
Well, we, we already have to talk about other signs, placement of signs, whether we want one between the two drive, the two drive-through windows or not. We, we have to go over all that anyway, and they could make a good case when they come back with their sign thing, this is what they do around the country, this is important to them, it's sort of their logo. So that, that's why I thought we might punt this until, you know, give conditional approval on everything else, but, but this one will, will have to come back anyway.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Would it help if we got an opinion from our city architect?
Is he still here?
Hello? So that's, that's an option that the commission has, is to ask Ms. Schultz to opine about that particular feature. I think what Mr., and I like where Mr. Cox is going with this, is, I guess that's the question for Mr. Gatle, is, is that piece of the, of the building, I don't, I think the answer is it, it is not, but is it critical to have that answer tonight, or can we address that when you come back later?
I, I believe that we can address it when we come back later. The only thing that I would try to figure out, and, and this is just for my own, because, again, we are the franchisee, and so we have to make sure that we're, we're aligned with what our corporate entity wants to do. And so if they would come back and say, "Well, what if you do this out of brick?", I just want to know at what point, if it's something that's applied afterwards, then it's considered a sign if it's, if it were done out of a different, a slightly different color brick or a different color brick, you know, significantly different color brick. What, if we did it that way, then I don't know what they would, it's just, it seems every time I go and ask them, then they come up with something that I didn't ask, and then I, and then I'm like, "Oh, no, I, I didn't ask that." So I just want to address that if I, if I could. If it were a different color brick, would that be considered a sign? If it's, if it's a building material like brick, then maybe it's not, but it, then it's an architectural feature. So I just want to be able to have that dialogue or, or be able to answer that question, knowing that they're probably going to ask me that.
And I, and I feel like, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I, I feel like, I, I just, I would need to think about it a little bit more in the context of our sign code.
Understand.
And, and understand it a little more and, you know, and maybe that's an offline phone conversation with, with, you know, myself and with Ms. Schultz, you know, I don't, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, I, I'd like to see if the commission's amenable to it to give you an approval tonight, subject to, and if that piece of this is, is not critical insofar as the, the, in the bones of the building, if you will, like, you had to make a decision tonight, then I, I feel like it'd be better to do a little more research if the commission was okay, and maybe come back on that issue.
Okay, and I would be, I would be fine with that. I, I just, obviously, when we, if we're talking about a different material or something like that, we just have to get ahead of that from a
Oh, sure.
Lead time standpoint, and, and as far as the design goes, it's really, you know, it's brick and it's brick, where those joints occur is not going to kill us, but I just want to make sure from that standpoint, we just have enough time to be able to adjust that. But, and we absolutely do. I don't want to, I don't want it to seem like we don't, but I just don't want it to get delayed another two months or something like that, where all of a sudden, we're, we're nervous about it. But I, I agree, if we have that conversation with Ms. Schultz and yourself and, and really, you know, iron that out to, to figure out what that is, then I think we can definitely do that. I'd be
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel like definitely anything that would take very long. I, I understand you want to, you want to get moving and respect that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Siobhan, Joe Gilati here, if I could for a minute?
Yes, sir.
He has, some of you may have saw in my memo, generally, from an engineering point of view, I don't have an issue with the plan, I think the traffic pattern is proper. I think making the east entrance into a right-in only is the correct move. The only concern, Drew, that I wanted to bring up to you is, it looks like if you have too much stacking waiting to order in the drive-through line, that it could, could block the flow of traffic in the easterly aisle, if you get more than one or two cars stacked, it could be an internal traffic flow problem for you.
Yes, and we are, we understand that, is, and, and that is a concern that we are working with our operations team. Typically, our busiest time is during, typically, our busiest time is during the first few months or first few weeks. And what we, what our operations team does is they go and meet with adjacent property owners and see what we're able, you know, how are we able to alleviate some of that traffic? Part of that is, you know, encouraging more pickup. We're, we're implementing a, a mobile pickup that will take place this summer, that our corporate entity is doing now, so it, it would facilitate a little bit more of that, where it's drive, still drive-through heavy or pickup heavy, so we, we think that that's going to help out. But we, we definitely will work within that to make sure that we're not backing out. And then we understand that the only way we can continue to do business is if we have a is if, uh, we have a consistent and good flow through our site. And if we start to back out into drive aisles and nobody can get around, then we're at a gridlock and we can't operate that way.
Yeah, that, exactly. That's why I wanted to bring it up to you. So you're aware of it. I'd hate to see your, your, um, customers be trapped in the parking lot. Probably would happen, or just in general, the internal traffic flow would not work. So.
Yeah. And, and we do, um, to hopefully, uh, put people at ease, we do employ, um, off duty police officers, uh, to, during that, what, what we call the honeymoon phase, um, while we are, while we are busy. Cause we understand when, you know, it's a, it's a heavy draw, um, you know, not quite as much as, uh, what Chick-fil-A does at their new locations. Um, but we do have quite a bit of a draw. Um, and so, you know, that is something we're always cognizant of, but we do hire off duty police officers to help facilitate that traffic. We work with the municipalities to make sure that we're not being a nuisance and we're controlling that as much as we possibly can.
All right. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chabon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
Well, um, I, I just have one more item and I apologize for not addressing this, uh, before. And, and, uh, Mr. Franz has mentioned it a couple of different times, the muntens. Um, the last meeting in December, when we were, um, when I spoke, we had mentioned, or I had mentioned that there are a lot of facilities in the area, uh, that do, that do have, there's, there's, it's about 50/50, some that do have muntens and some that do not. Um, and, and if we do have a choice, um, we would prefer to not have the muntens, um, if, 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 if we're able to do that. Um, uh, and we are replacing all of the windows, um, so that they are all consistent with, with our, um, where we are adding windows and where we're replacing windows. We, we are replacing all, even though they're the same window opening, we're repl- planning to replace the entire window opening. Um, so if we can not have the muntens, that is preferred from our standpoint.
Okay.
But.
Anyone else?
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just follow up to that, the, the muntens are specifically mentioned in our architectural code, but they're not, it's not required. It's mentioned insofar as, um, you wanna try to have, um, a number of the qualifying features for Western Reserve architecture, but it's not flat out required. So I don't necessarily have an issue with them. I just wanted to bring it up to the commission. So you guys provide the applicant the direction. If the, if no muntens are acceptable, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to give our, our, I guess, speak our preference. That, we didn't include them. That, that is our preference, but I just wanted to speak it as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Comments? Questions?
Joe, let me mention this. As, as to the, uh, I guess they're called muntens. Um, since it's not a requirement, I don't know why we should opine on that at all. I thought we would just conditionally approve this, subject to administrative approval and subject to, conditionally to the BZA, uh, approving two items on parking spaces and, uh, the size of the driveway. And, and instead of us going into, uh, what should be on the windows or what should not be on the windows, I, I don't think that's, uh, one of our, that's the requirement, is it? For, for our motion?
So i- if I can, if I, if I can, Mr. Cox, I think the, the, one of the things that I always try to do, and I just think is really good for you guys as a city into the future, is you, you wanna set the record, make it very clear why you made decisions a certain way. So if I were to go back and I would say, cause, cause the applicant just said the same thing. Yeah, 50% don't, 50% do. Well, why do the 50% that don't have them, why don't they have them? And so it would be good to recognize that the applicant has gone above and beyond to recognize the Western Reserve architecture with the addition of the majority of the building being done in brick, removal of the, the EFS, um, introducing the architectural, um, feature on the south, um, building elevation, the, um, the, uh, um, that column on the front facade. And so they've gone through and they've done these things. And as a result, the muntens aren't necessary because they've introduced these distinguishing features of Western Reserve architecture. And that's why the muntens aren't necessary. So I think setting that record straight and having it very clear in the minutes that they introduced other Western Reserve architectural features, and that's why the muntens weren't required is, is good for the record in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 maybe I don't follow all that. I, I, I thought we just approved this conditionally. And since Ms. Schultz isn't making that a, a, a very definite requirement, I, I didn't think we'd go into, uh, all, all the, all the precision on, uh, what should be on the windows and what's not. The applicant isn't having on the windows. We're not objecting to that. I thought we'd approve it, uh, as submitted, uh, with just the two conditions. That, that would be the kind of motion I would make.
And, and you, and Mr. Cox, that's perfectly fine. I think, um, I'm overly cautious and I like the record to be clear as I research back and look at why a city did something a certain way. I think, um, Ms., uh, um, uh, Roganish will provide the record and will have some comments about this in the minutes. So that would be fine. If you do it that way and it's in the minutes reflecting this discussion.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other items? Any other questions? Okay. Someone like to make a motion?
You want me to try it?
Go ahead. We, we can always, yeah, to comment on it. Go ahead.
Um, I, I, I move that we, uh, approve, uh, we approve conditionally, uh, uh, the application, uh, for final conditional approval, uh, based upon administrative review and subject to the ruling from the BZA on parking spaces and the size of the driveway.
Second. Did I hear a second in there?
I did. I seconded it.
Any discussions?
Any discussion? Okay. Um, I, I would like to ask Mr. Franz one question before we finalize this. Uh, Brian, I heard Tony say conditional approval. I think I heard you say conditional approval. Um, as opposed to like preliminary approval? I think we wanna go with conditional approval. Is, and is there that much of a difference in the two?
Well, so, um, so the applicant has preliminary approval from the, I think, November or December, uh, 2020 meeting. And they're seeking final approval this evening. So you would be conditionally approving the request for final site plan approval, subject to, and this is what I heard from Mr. Cox, the board of zoning appeal approval of the two variances and final administrative review and approval of a revised site plan based on the consultant's recommendation, myself, the designer and the engineer.
Okay. Thank, thank you. I was, I forgot about the preliminary. Thank you. Um, wouldn't we not wanna include in the conditional approval, um, the revised lighting plan too? Is that part? Do we have to mention that too?
Yeah, I think that, um, it's my understanding from Mr. Cox's motion is that he was, um, recommending conditional approval, subject to the BZA and subject to an administrative review of revised plans that comply with the comments of the consultants. Is that correct, Mr. Cox?
Yes, that's exactly what I meant.
Perfect. Which will include the light, uh, which will include the photometrics.
Okay.
Good question.
Bearing that in, bearing that in mind, did we leave anything out in your opinion, Mr. Franz?
No, I think we've, we've thoroughly vetted the matter, um, the issues this evening.
Okay. Do we have a motion and we have it seconded?
Yes, I, I, I amended my motion then, and so if someone seconds it, I think we can probably vote.
Okay. Those in favor? Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Susan, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Velata?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Westbrook sustains.
Yes.
Very good. Are there any other items we need to discuss for tonight?
Um, Mr., Mr. Chabon, if I, if I could, um, just a, a quick, um, to, uh, to the applicant. Um, Drew, you can feel free to, uh, to reach me on my email or contact, um, Susan. She has my cell phone number, um, which I can provide you in here if you'd prefer. But, uh, no problem. Give me a call and, and, uh, but just, uh, reach out Susan to let you know all that information.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gatliff, do you guys have an estimated like month when you might open?
Um, we are hopeful for May, um, if everything goes, uh, as, as was mentioned. We have been, you know, doing interior, some interior work. Um, uh, and so we are hopeful that that can be completed by May, um, for a May opening.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other items? Susan, you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, I, therefore I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Second it. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Good night, all. Take care.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Good night, all.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
That's great.
My granddaughter, she's, my granddaughter's an expert at planning commission now.
Excellent. Love it.
Bye.